Okay.
Is it triggered yet?
Yes, it's showing up live.
It hasn't switched me back to my screen yet. There we go. Diane, go for it.
Okay, so this is our council work session, August 17th to 2020. At the current time, we have presence Mayor Hughes, Councilman Baddeley, Councilman Wolf, Councilman Berger, and Councilman McMarra. We are missing for the moment. Councilman Curl. So we're going to go ahead and get started since it's after seven. I had sent a list of things that were open items. You know, obviously, we only have so much time this evening. There's a lot on the list. Is there, we can, it's in no particular order on this list. So if we want to talk about, if we want to table some things to the next work session, or if we want to talk about something because we think it'll be fairly quick. Any opinions on?
We just started.
Start at the top, go down.
Good enough.
So, okay, the first one is the leave contract. Now, I understand the Streets Committee has not met yet. I don't know if we want to talk about this as a council, or if we want to table this to the Streets to let them decide.
Well, I think we can make this decision real quick here if everybody's had a chance to look at the proposals.
Yeah, yeah, Tony and I are Streets anyway. We're two thirds of the committee.
Yeah.
So I've looked at it. I think Mark has. Brian, have you looked at it?
That was a yes, I think.
So, yes, and like I said, when I researched the other vendor, I didn't get anything good, nothing good came of it. So to me, I don't, I don't really think that we have a choice except to go, in my opinion, to go with McKinley.
Oh, yeah, with John, I think his number was lower and he didn't limit himself to just one, one day a week. You know, the two big things that I, that stand out to me.
Yeah, I'm on the same page as Tony. He's. Seems like a good deal all around.
Yeah.
Purpose, and just so you guys know, and I'm really just saying this for the record, the purpose of the reason that the second guy did one day a week is that's probably one of the biggest complaints is people don't know when he's coming. And then leaves sit out there for, you know, if he comes through on a Saturday and they start making their leave Saturday afternoon or Sunday, sometimes they sit there for a whole week. Sometimes he does try to do multiple times in a week. Sometimes he goes 10, 12 days without, you know, depending. So the purpose of having the one day a week is, and it's still based on weather, so it's not a guarantee. I'm being the devil's advocate here, pros, cons. So, and only because I have a little bit more background from different people because, you know, I ask certain questions or whatever. So that was the purpose of giving one week because that was something that people have asked for. But again, it's weather related. It's, it can still be an issue. The only issue, a problem, concern that I had from last year, and I would just, you know, I know that it's in the contract, is holding somebody's feet to the fire when it boils down to the new development. And that was an issue that I had last year, was the vendor did not necessarily want to go in the new development. And I don't want to, and it was a conflict. It was definitely a conflict. People were complaining because he wasn't coming through there. So it would be, it's in the contract, there's 780 homes, and that's the contract. So it would be a matter of enforcing, in which, you know, it's something that, that's our job. So I just want to let people know that was probably the biggest issue last year.
Are we saying that the contract, this year's version would resolve that issue then?
No, it was the same contract as last year, pretty much, with the addition, with the additional houses, specifically 780 homes is listed in the contract. So yes, it should, it does. I mean, it's, it's the same as it was last year, but his, the feet weren't held to the fire. And this time, I'm here to tell you that we will have to, because there are a lot more houses back there. And there are, some people do have wooded backyards. So that was probably the biggest concern, was not having a specific date or anything like that. But again, you can't control weather. So that doesn't really matter.
Talk with, oh, John and I go way back, and I can, I'll deal with him.
Perfect.
All right.
So if everybody, if everybody's okay, I don't, you know, if everybody's okay with me substituting, going ahead and taking out X's on the second reading, we are just now at second reading for the 24th. So I will put the information in there and get you guys a revised revision of the second reading with McKenney in there. And then you guys, that's where you're going to vote on it. But is everybody okay with me substituting McKenney's? I get a thumbs up there. I think Diane's on board. I think Tony's on board. There we go. So I'm going to have that ready for you guys on the 24th. Okay, next.
Okay, next. We did table the sidewalks legislation. Tony had sent an email with some points in it, but I'm not sure that we want to, we should probably do this in legislation, would you say?
Yes, because Eric's not here. Eric can answer those questions. And for the record, I only invited you guys.
I mean, I'd like to get a copy, like a hard copy, you know, old fashioned paper copy of that. You know, the thing I noticed today, I started looking through it and writing down the areas that I think need to be taken out or changed. And then I came across, it's, the way they're numbered isn't even correct. It, you know, goes through the specifications. It goes from A through W, lowercase a through lowercase w, and then it starts at lowercase a again, you know, so the whole format of that, it looks like he, you know, you pulled it out, you know, and then just didn't, it needs a lot of work.
Okay. It sounds like this is going where the grass is going, where the grass went.
The weed ordinance?
Weed ordinance, yeah, seems like it's going the same way. Okay.
Well, I mean, on the other side of this.
Next Monday at six, so that'll definitely be on our agenda for that then.
Okay.
And, and, you know, just trying to shorten it down, because, you know, we already have code in exterior, you know, I was looking through the, the property maintenance code when it talks about the exterior properties. And there's a, there's a, you know, line in there about driveways and sidewalks needing to be in repair. You know, so I think we need to get somewhere in between 10 pages of code and a couple paragraphs that we currently have.
Okay. Okay. So the next topic is, I put this on here, just the code enforcement efforts. This is the administration. This is, does anything want to be discussed regarding just the way the letters are going out or something like that? Or is this?
It's a train. It's a, currently, it is an absolute train wreck, the way Jason's enforcing the code, in my opinion. You know, I've talked to Franklin County, you know, when it comes to the roof, making people give permits for roofs and siding, exterior doors and windows. You know, he's going after people that are putting in one window, you know, telling me I need to get a, you know, building permit. Well, that's not accurate, you know, and I wish everyone would take a look at the, because the, and here's the thing, if you look at his email, you know, that he sent out to everyone talking about where it says you need to get a permit for a roof, you know, the part of the code that he signed it is the fee schedule. And that's the fee schedule with regards to building permits. We don't do that, we don't, we don't form, we don't create the fees for building permits. And where, and where the language that describes when you need to get a building permit and when you don't, or when you don't have to get one, comes from the residential building code. It does not come from our code. And he's, you know, that's why, when I say I don't think he understands how to interpret the codes. And it just, well, and with regards to the, you know, the garden, the front yard garden that we got emails about today, you know, there are codes that, I'm assuming that our code enforcement officer told the braskets that there's no code violations there. And there are code violations there. They're the most basic codes that we have when it comes to weeds not being more than six inches high. That's one. An inoperable vehicle is not just one that doesn't op, doesn't work, it has to have current registration on it. That vehicle doesn't have current registration.
Yeah, that, that one, I, I know we had this discussion with the chief a year ago or so, because someone had kept a vehicle parked and weren't sure for, and he was saying if it's, as long as it could be driven away, and this.
But if it doesn't, if it doesn't have a registered, current registration, you cannot drive it away, because you can't operate it on the street.
I know you're not supposed to, but I, I don't know that that's, is that our, it's our problem, it's our problem if the person drives away, if there, if it's just sitting there, how is it our, our police department's problem if it's just sitting there?
It is against code to have an inoperable vehicle. Our code.
Now, now you're saying inoperable, this is where this language gets ridiculous. It was, there's inoperable, when somebody says inoperable to me, that means that the engine won't turn over, there's not four wheels, tires missing, that's inoperable, but this car's got four wheels on it. As far as I know, it'll run.
This, I've been written up for before here in Minerva Park for not having a current registration. Other people have been written up for not having a current registration.
Well, as you say, as you say it every time.
That is, Diane, if you don't understand how this stuff works.
Every time we get a new code enforcement person, there's something.
We misunderstood. You've misunderstood. An operable vehicle means that it has to have regis, current registration.
Then it should say that.
Chief has never said that. What's that?
It should say current registration, not you. The coach should say it. It has to be operable, and it has to be currently registered. And I, you know, if that's true, then everybody who keeps their, I mean, if you had a motor home that you parked in the back and you weren't using it, and you let the registration lapse.
Then you have to make it, you, in order to park your vehicle in, on your property, it has to have current registration. That's the term, that's why they say inoperable, because you can't operate it on the street unless the registration is current.
Well, and, and we know that the registration's not current because of the license plate doesn't have a tag on it, right? Because with the chief of police would have had to go look him up to see if he is registered, right?
Oh, you can see that the tag expired. In this particular case, you can't tell because, whether it's expired or not. And that's against the law.
It's not registered.
Drove by it.
It's sitting there, just visually, okay, so I'm done now, but how do you know it's not registered unless you, you check with the police and they go look it up?
It says expired, it says expired, you know, the orange tag, whatever color tag it has on it this month or the year, when it's expired. All you had to do is look at it.
I will also say that even if your car's registered, if you don't have the sticker, the current sticker on your license plate in Ohio, they will consider you to be unregistered, because I got a ticket for that when I was like 17 or whatever, and I'd gotten my registration.
But it wasn't, you didn't get a ticket in your driveway.
No, I was on a road.
Of course.
And, and one can have an inoperable vehicle that is registered, right? If I, if I, if I wrecked my car and had them tow the wreckage to my driveway instead of to a mechanic, because, I don't know, my car is paid off and maybe I want to turn it into an art piece, while it is inoperable in my driveway, that fact that it is inoperable is what is a violation of the code referenced, not whether or not it is registered. Right, it is the operability.
Have we considered?
It's not operable, it's the registration is.
That may, that may also be true, but that is not the only definition of operability.
Now, ladies and gentlemen, have we considered, has anybody been out to this property and tried to address the landowners about what's going on? Is this like a well-known, is this a well-known address for this sort of thing? Is this a?
Yes.
Is this a bad, is this like, you know, a run of bad luck? Is this, what's the background here? Things don't happen in a vacuum.
It's been going on for many years. The big, the big issue was, you know, for years now, I'm not sure how many, is the garden in the front yard, you know, is the big problem. And those weeds have got to be, you know, feet high.
Oh, they're not that bad. I walked it this morning.
I went, well, what are you calling a weed and what aren't you calling a weed?
Exactly, exactly. Some people think though, you know, that.
So unless it's, unless it's a weed that is specifically called out in our weed ordinance, it'll be really hard to call it a weed in any other way, right? Because I, if it's green and not on the noxious weeds list, I think it's a plant. I think it's a, I think it's a feature, not a bug.
Well, your yard is real close to being on the.
We have a, we have what we call a, our, our, many of our planting beds are wildflowers.
I mean, yeah, Tony, you want to come by my apartment right, or my condo, write me up? We got some milkweed, not good stuff.
I don't want, I don't want.
Our grass is low, but we have wildflowers.
Anything that is a grass or a weed cannot be more than six inches tall.
You shouldn't be talking about plants, you know? I mean, stick with your, stick with your expertise. I, that plant identification is, planted, yes, plant identification is not one of your areas of expertise, right?
Well, what, identify the, what we, what plants need to be cut down and what don't? Is that what you're, you're not capable of doing?
You have, if you walk by the place, you see that, that these taller plants you're calling weeds are not, not like.
There's not good language in there.
They're not like peonies, you know, all in a row with pretty mulch, but that doesn't make.
Maybe, maybe if you took a look at the weed ordinance, which is like 660 something or other, you know, it, it isn't just weeds, there's, it talks about cultivating that is normal. I mean, there's, there's some other language in there that you ought to read before you start saying that, that there's nothing wrong with that guy's garden in his front yard.
Well, I just want to make sure we're not singling this person out, because other people certainly have, certainly have what some people would call plants, some people would call weeds in their front yard. When I go on my walk, sometimes I, I almost can't help myself from wanting to go pull some, but I leave their yard alone because it's their yard. I, I just want to make sure we're not, you know, code enforcement isn't taking a lot of time on, because this happens to be a quote, quote unquote, repeat offender. But I have to say, if it's been happening for years, something goes on, because, you know, that they wouldn't have any grass, if they weren't doing anything for years, I mean, that makes no sense to me, because the grass is not 10 feet tall, they're doing something.
They're doing as little as possible, which I can appreciate that's, you know, good enough, but there, there are code violations at that property right now.
Okay.
And our code, and our code enforcement officer doesn't seem to feel that way.
All right, so.
So here's what I'm going to say, when it comes to, this is a property that I've heard about for well over two years, and maybe, probably, probably well over three years. And the truth of the matter is, nothing has been done with it in three years. This is a property that I have also brought to our code enforcement officers' attention, because this is a property that they do as little as possible. Again, you have materials that have been sitting out there since May, and those are just the materials that they put out there this year. Without going into the weeds of this, as Diane would typically say, part of the issue becomes, I can't support our code enforcement officer, council can't support our code enforcement officer, because we can't even agree whether or not this property, which there is a resident that is extremely upset that she has to walk out and look every single day at her property, but yet she's concerned that the other people are happening right behind her that have a gorgeous layout of their property, is getting citations for not getting a permit to put a window in. So it's, it's hard to tell Jason, do this, do this, do this, but don't do this and this and this, when clearly that is a horrific thing to have to wake up every single morning and look at. So Jason needs our support. We have got to get to a place that we all understand, we don't need to understand the codes, we need to understand what we're doing. And we can't even argue between what's a weed and what's not a weed. Here's what I would say, I'm the queen of not doing my lawn, but I will promise you this, my grass is cut every single week, the weeds are taken out of my flower bed, come by here any day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. I would never want my neighbors to have to look at that. And this is what one of our residents, actually, this is what an entire street of residents has been complaining for years. So we need to come to a place so we can support our code enforcement officer as to what we want to enforce, what we don't want to enforce, and what we, what needs to be enforced. I mean, at this point, we are all arguing about one particular email that came through today, that we all have various of opinions. And I can tell you, if I woke up to that every single morning, I would be emailing the code enforcement officer every single morning.
We don't, and I don't believe, I don't believe we have, we have strong enough code to say, we want your front yard to be nice.
And I don't think this is, I don't think.
Completely pleasing.
Yeah.
And, and, and we don't have, I don't believe we have the code for that.
And I'm telling you that that's where I believe we are completely wrong. If we are going to, how am I going to say this? The things that we can cite people for, and the things that we do cite people for, and the things that we don't, are just, I can't believe we let people get away with that. And yet, we don't, on other things.
There's things, the village, there's things the village has been cited for that we're not doing.
Right, so, but here's.
Let me read the code real quick, because it isn't the way, it isn't the way Brian just described it about noxious weeds. It reads that the current less seen agent tenant or other such person having charge of, care of any land parcel or lot within the village shall maintain the premises and exterior property free from weeds or plant growth, including grass in excess of six inches. That's the way the code reads. It doesn't say noxious weeds, it just says weeds, grasses, or, or plant growth.
Okay, so what's?
It applies to our butterfly weeds too. They're three feet to six feet.
Then it goes on to describe.
So, yeah, so, so all my, all my shrubs are, are.
Everybody has to, everybody has to cut their trees and shrubs now.
Right.
Nothing in your front yard can be more than six inches. Just start hacking them down.
Maintaining your trees and, and, you know what, here you guys, here you are.
No, no, I, I'm serious about this. I mean, I don't want us to niggled people. I, I understand the, the situation this person's been going on, and I, you know, we had a neighbor, we had a neighbor across the street and her neighbor made her crazy. I mean, and, and there was only so much, they, they thought those things, those things that were growing along the front of their house, they, they thought they were nice, they were weeds, but they thought they were nice. There was this big argument with the neighbor who said they were weeds. So they never did get cut down, by the way. And, and so with, with the previous code enforcement officer and, and now the neighbor's gone. But what I'm saying is, is this weed, I mean, this is the hardest thing, that's why I probably took six months to write this code. But basically, the weeds that this, if you look at the pictures, the things you're calling weeds are within the boundaries of this stone circle of planting. Or you even called it a garden. I didn't call it a garden, somebody called it a garden. It's in that space, it's not the grass in general, it's in this boundary.
Up close to the windows, you have weeds all the way around all of the bushes that are over, so overgrown, they're overgrown of the windows. And there's no issue with that, I'm not saying the risk.
Maybe we could look, maybe, they, they can't be the only one in the park, because they've never, okay. So what I would say is, I don't know what the, except to say, maybe you have some kind of like announcement to everybody that you're going to go around and, and you're going to score their front yard and say whether they have not, they need to, please or not, get everybody at one time that, that has this problem, because, you know, you just, it looks like, it looks like you're just singling out certain house.
I know many people that have been told they needed to weed their gardens before, over the years. This is, listen, you need, this is what really irritates me, is trying to have a conversation with a group of people who haven't taken the time, and David, I'm not talking about you, that haven't taken the time to code, you know, and if you, it defines what plant growth is in our code.
Some of it, actually, Tony, goes beyond codes and its actual law statutes that we're dealing with. I spent all day on this, I'm sorry I'm coming on late, but it's for this reason. I spent all day on this, not knowing it was a topic tonight. So. Had to do with, had to do with trees, not weeds, but it's the same subject.
So if I can, if I can, go ahead, Joe.
Well, I was just going to say, I, I spent the day with the head forester for all of AEP, whose office is in West Virginia, but he handles Northeast Columbus. And they just finished passing legislation in Bexley on this, and they had to have AEP come in to help them get it passed, because there were people that wanted to hug trees that were a danger to the community or themselves, and they were not allowing the city to come in and attend to it. Now, we don't even have the funds to do that, but if we did, there would be people that most likely would be putting up resistance to this very subject of weeds, trying to say there's something else. So Bexley passed legislation, I'm getting a copy of it in case, so I can send it around, everybody can read it, you know, about what Bexley had to do to be able to deal with this, because people would prohibit them from taking care of it. So now we're on the other end trying to say, should we take care of this? Well, I have resistance. So it might require some sort of, you know, ordinance or something, but I'm getting copies of it for everybody, and you can make what you want of it yourselves. I'm sorry to put that in there, but that's what I was doing when I was late.
So I, I think Tiffany, the reason I put this on here was just because I didn't know where it was going next in terms of just the day-to-day current code enforcement efforts and what, I mean, it's, if what's, or you might.
We need to give our code enforcement officer what he needs to be able to do his job. We can't tell him to do a job and take it away from him.
I, I would agree. I think the biggest part that we have is, our code enforcement officer needs support, trying to determine exactly what it is council wants them to do, what I want them to do, all of the above. So I can tell you that, at this point, arguing back and forth via email and doing all of this kind of stuff is not working. At some point, we have got to sit down and figure out what we want to enforce as far as our grass code goes, because if we're going to enforce what our grass code says, no, you're right, we're not going to nitpick on one particular person. But I think most of us would agree, if we had to look at that every single day, we would be disappointed. A lot of us pay way too much money to live in the village, between property taxes and between all of that, to look at that every single day. Now, some people may think that it's not a big deal, clearly it was. I mean, she's gotten, I will tell you that if you go back through public record, you will find that this has been going on for years, and the emails have been going for years. So this is not the first conversation that this person has had. Unfortunately, this is the same outcome every single time. Well, it's not that bad, okay? Yeah, because you don't have to look at it every day.
Not always the same outcome. If we get into certain situations, we'll have higher authorities step in. Everybody's talking about weeds, and you ought to see the ones growing in the whole north half of North Lake. Are we going to do more from that?
Right, we're getting to that next.
I'm not trying to bring that up as, as a lake subject, I'm trying to put it in as a weed subject. The law, any law has to apply to everybody equally.
That's what I'm saying.
There, that's.
That was my kind of takeaway from this, that's why my, let me lower my hand here. That was kind of my takeaway from all this. It seems as if, it seems as if there's, there is the perception that coding, at least that's the impression I'm getting from Councilman Baddeley, that it seems that, there's the impression that coding enforcement is applied unequally throughout the village, or haphazardly. Is that a fit assessment?
I don't think it's, here's what I'm going to say, some people don't like the way that he's enforcing. He is enforcing what he, what is enforceable, but then there's some that maybe aren't, because he doesn't have a clear picture of maybe what a weed is, because it doesn't say. You guys are all arguing over what a weed is, but the moral of the story is, our codes apparently are not strong enough to enforce what is considered, I'm going to say, a nuisance property. Might be going a little extreme there, but.
We don't have to figure all this out, Tiffany. Every other municipality has gone through this before. Cowell, you know, they have a lot more money than we have. They've, they've done all this two, three times, and all one need to do is refer to what they've done, and they have a lot of code enforcement people too.
We spend a lot of time on our weed ordinance, and I think it's fine, if you look at it. I mean, Brian, you were involved in this, weren't you?
I was, I was, in fact, on. I was, I was in fact, uh, on legislative committee when we spent the better part of a year arguing about it.
I think it's fine.
So if I can, if I can, if I can throw in my, my two cents on this, that what I'm, what I'm really hearing is that our code enforcement officer needs to have an interpretation of this code, right? The codes that apply and then use that interpretation to cite accordingly. Right now, hold on, Joe, I'm not quite done.
I'm sorry.
Right. So the code is written, right? That's council's part. Council in, uh, according to six sixty-five, uh, deliberated the hell out of this in 2017 and passed it in October of 2017, right? The code enforcement officer is the employee of the mayor, right? The mayor should be, you know, working with that code enforcement officer to interpret the code and then act upon that. Right? If, if, if council needs to reinterpret every code every time it needs to be applied, this is going to, this is going to take even longer. Because then we're going to argue, we're going to go back through the six month argument we had when we passed it to re-adjudicate every vow, they weed, noxious every single time. And that's not how anything can run. So if you want my opinion on how to handle this, we need, we, we need the mayor to give direction to the code enforcement officer of how you would like to see this code enforced. Right? That's what an executive branch of government does.
Well, if it's legislative, we don't get a choice. We, we need to be in a position that our code enforcement officer can do his job and not feel like he's going to get his knees cut off by the council is what.
As, as, as long as, as long as what he does is within the letter of that code, I would never do that.
No, but he's obviously feeling, he's obviously feeling undermined to some degree. And we can eliminate that without having to settle all these other arguments. Me, it was trees all day. Well, weeds, trees, you know, similar. Actually did an ordinance, I'll get you guys all a copy of it because they, they were having big trouble. They'd come to deal with trees that were going to fall down and destroy somebody's house. And the people wouldn't let them on their property. Uh, literally. So they finally passed, uh, an ordinance that, you know, allows the Bexley council to, you know, to be involved in it just to enforce what this new ordinance they have.
Would Tony or, would Tony or councilman Wolf mind sending me the copy of the, or the link to where we're debating the current weed code? I'd love to have a look at it. I.
Yeah, it's so.
I can tell you that it's.
Go to the.
Six sixty-five point one, oh, one.
Sixty-five point oh, one.
Six sixty-five point oh, one.
And that would be on our website and the codes, I'm guessing?
Yeah.
Yep.
All right. I will have a look at that. I, I mean, I, I obviously haven't read the entire village code, but I always try to have a look at what we're, uh, discussing.
I appreciate it, Dave. It'd be nice if everyone else would get up to speed on these things. Cause I would say that, you know, we all took a note to uphold the laws of the village of Menor Park. It's pretty hard to do that if you haven't taken the time to understand them. And I understand we don't need to, you know, it's not required to know the whole code. But when we start to get into issues about weeds, it'd be nice if someone read the weed code.
Well, we could also, we could all, Tony, we could also work on this and clarify it if, if things are really unclear.
I don't think it is unclear and that's why I, if.
Well, I, I haven't read this one. I spent all day on trees.
Okay. So here's, here's the thing. I, the one I don't understand is, so our code enforcement person said he wasn't going to cite this house because it wasn't that bad. Tony says the code enforcement person is wrong. And Tiffany feels like as mayor, what, what is your opinion? Do I have that right?
Now, I, I, here's what I'm going to say. It, it boils back down to the arguments back and forth between when there is citing of certain things. If there's not citing of certain things, the codes, what the codes actually read, council getting involved and emailing back and forth with Jason, you and Tony and everybody emailing back and forth, which is arguing over what the code says, what the code doesn't say, what council wants to enforce, what they don't want to enforce. So it's, it's one of those.
Yeah. Okay. So it's that, uh, uh, Tony disagrees with this, I believe. But as far as me and obviously Brian agrees, it's not a council's job to manage the code enforcement persons, it's a mayor's job.
Correct. But you guys are all missing the point. I can manage the person. I can manage the person, but I can't, and he can't enforce a code that people are arguing what the code actually means, what the code wants. He, he's doing what he believes he's supposed to be doing. But there are council people, there are residents, there are, you know, all of the above that don't believe that what is being enforced is what's supposed to be enforced. So there are going back to questions when you guys are all, you know, when I have people emailing back and forth, the code enforcement officer that's enforcing exactly what he believes he's supposed to be enforcing and getting in trouble for forcing those things. These are elected, you guys are all elected officials. So he's doing what he believes he's supposed to be doing. But then we have counsel maybe not believing he's doing what he's supposed to be doing, hence some of the emails back and forth.
I, I think that, uh, you know.
That's where council comes into play is that it is, or it is included in one of the committee assignments. It talks about code enforcement. And I forget which one it is, but it, you know, the administration of the village is shared between the mayor and the council. And this idea that Brian keeps throwing around that it's all up to the mayor, I don't agree with that. You know, his opinion on that. It's that it's all of our responsibilities to make sure the laws are being upheld. And our code enforcement officer isn't doing that. I, the next thing I'd like to talk about. Can I finish please? The code enfor, the next thing I want to bring up is that there is no such thing as a property improvement permit in the village of Menor Park. There is no such thing. It only appears on the fee schedule and being on the fee schedule is not the place in the code that requires someone to get a permit, just like we have a permit for, uh, a, a fee for, uh, ice cream trucks. We got all kinds of fees just because there's a fee schedule or, or a fee described on the fee schedule doesn't mean you have to get that permit. It should be described in the code. I can show you in the code where it says you need to get a permit for all, for many different things. But there isn't any place in the code that says you need to get a permit for property improvements. And this is where the, the, our code enforcement officer has gotten way out of line in what he, you know, considers to be him enforcing the code.
Than that to me.
Well, what, what definition is he using for property improvement? I, we have an exemption for landscaping and all of our rules. I haven't read them lately, but they used to say anything landscaping related is exempt. We could clear that part of it up. That's, that's to answer your question, Tony.
The, my question to everyone here is show me a code where it says you need to get a property permit, a property improvement permit. Because that's, that's been going on, you know, for some time now. Is that if you do anything at your.
It's very connected. It's very connected. We exempt landscaping. Anybody can claim landscaping's anything. That's what I'm saying.
It hasn't been an issue here, Joe.
No, it hasn't. But what I'm saying is our codes say that it's an exemption. So if you don't want it exempted, you could fix it. That's all I'm saying.
So property proven is like, is a similar to word to, uh, operational vehicle. It's the same, it's the same vague term. So anyway, I, I don't know about any list of, any listed. You, you talked about the list and you've, you've already said a million times that the list doesn't match the, the permit list, doesn't, fees don't match this other and, and so how's it coming in planning and zoning with trying to resolve some of this stuff?
I, I'll mention one thing for background. There's no other community anywhere around here whose entire community is located on a watershed bog. And we are, so we have some special problems, whether that be weeds or insects or what we're going through with the lakes. All of these things have a lot to do with our geographical location. And some of our, our rules should take that in that they do. I've read them all, but I'll start.
Okay. It looks like we're moving on to the next topic. I'm not sure if we're, I, I wish, I don't like just moving on without coming up with the, what is the next step here? Because obviously we're bogged down in a bog. Like Joe says, we've got a lot of bogs in, uh, in our village and this is one of them.
Well, I would suggest, I would suggest we review other communities near us that have already solved the same problem and see what they did. That would be a start.
And on this, because I haven't got, I haven't said anything, but I've been looking at it, um, code that is, and plant growth defined. Um, so here's the problem where these things aren't clear. And when this made it wasn't clear, because it says natural plantings of native wild plants and accepted cultivars of wild plants are recognized type of landscaping. These areas must be tended, cultivated in a manner consistent with natural plantings and confined to a definite area. If I can find a definite area and allow whatever grows there to grow, it is obviously a natural plant because it's growing and I didn't plan it. It is cultivated in a manner consistent with natural plantings. Cause that's what a natural planting is, is when things grow. And that's why I think we have trouble with this particular house and enforcing that.
Well, you also encounter trouble where you have a resistant person.
That I do kind of see as something that yes. Um, I don't know, I can see the operable inoperable on a car that's not currently registered. Is it operable? Um, I would really read that as a car up on wheels, not a car with a registration issue though, to be honest.
The chief, the chief will clear this up.
Um, I also just agree with the ordinance is there. The executive branch enforces the law. I'm not trying to say it's your fault or job Tiffany, but the law was written. I would be happy with you meeting with the code officer and saying, this is where your priorities need to be. This is what you need to do. And I would back you on that. And that's all I have to say about that before we move on.
Well, I can second that because I worked on it all day. I had sent Tiffany an email earlier telling her I was sending her all this stuff that Bexley just went through regarding things growing. And that case was trees, but it would be weeds also, they treat it the same. I know Powell has spent a lot of money and a lot of time on this stuff. And if we review what they have, it might answer our questions.
Okay. There would be the caveat that Powell is a much wealthier community, but.
Well, we don't, we don't have to argue that David until we know if it costs anything. I'm working with AEP all day on what they'll come here and do without charging us. As you all know, I worked on a lot of things where people don't charge us.
That's wonderful. You're, you're very good, uh, steward of our financial resources. That's not, that doesn't go unnoticed.
Well, I'm a taxpayer. Jean would say I have a personal interest in it. We all live here. It's a little bit like some other government bodies where they're not residents.
Absolutely, absolutely.
There's lobbyists working them up one side or down the other on something.
Well, yeah, I, I'm with you. I'm with you on all that.
Okay. So anyways, back to this. I mean, it, it's just going to be a matter of planning and zoning is going to continue to move forward on some of the codes that they're working on. I know one of the ones that they're working on right now is the swimming pools and a couple of other things. Um, but again, it, it goes back to the same thing, trying to have some support as far as what we're enforcing, what we're not. If council doesn't want to be involved, council needs to stay out of it. Um, that's the easiest way to say it, but that needs to be a group effort. So, and it's, that's not the way it works. I mean, I guess it goes back to the same thing because all, all I can say is I can't have, if you guys don't, if you guys want it, need to be the one to enforce it, I can't have different council people fighting the codes too.
I, I want you to, uh, these are our codes and I, I, as the adminis, as the, you need to administer them. Uh, you need to manage Jason and administer them as you see fit. And I am not, I, I don't, you know, whatever I think about that house, if you're saying that you want to find them, then you go do that, girl.
Jean's on vacation. What he would pop in here and say.
They call you the mayor. That's the mayor.
Jean would pop in here and he would say, you know, if you issue a citation for a code violation, it automatically becomes a processing of law case and a person can go to court and fight it. And it could go on and on and on forever and nothing be resolved.
And that's still, people still have the availability to do that. If they want to come to mayor's court and they want to argue it, that's the, one of the biggest reasons that we've talked about having mayor's court is them being able to come and argue the fact that they don't want to cut the grass or they don't want to do whatever it is they want to do. So.
Well, we could, we could, I mean, everybody's asking, what do we do? We could examine our own ordinances to see what loopholes are in there or to see what could be tightened up to make this all a little more.
That, I think that's part of it too. We're finding different things throughout that could potentially use a little tweaking. Um, one of the things is sign ordinance. So just, and again, I want to get on to the next thing really fast, but a sign ordinance is one of the other issues that we have. Um, don't really want to get in crazy detail, but you know, there are people that have political signs that are, that have been in their yard for two months already. And it's my understanding, um, according to the code sign, that political signs can't be in there for more than 30 days before the election. But I'm sure there's probably a loophole somewhere in there.
Jean's opined on that before, that it's, it's completely unenforceable.
Unenforceable. So, but here's.
It is pretty recognizable though, a weed versus a political sign.
Right. Well, again, we're talking about.
That would depend on your perspective as well.
Maybe unenforceable, that doesn't mean you can't cite someone, try to get them to cooperate.
No, but if they fight it, we're sunk if our.
Yeah. I mean, our codes are messed. But that's picking a fight you know you're going to lose.
Okay. But, and maybe I didn't say this correctly. I'm not interested in fighting them. Okay. But here's what I am interested. If we are going to allow people to have numerous signs in their yard, which are free speech, more power to them. Don't care what the sign says, they're allowed.
Well, up to a point.
Then we can't have any advertisement signs. That was a big push with the previous mayor. Um, my view is if you have worked on, on your house, if you want to advertise how wonderful that solar power company is that put things on there, let them have them. Um, I do believe there should be a limit as to how long Jason and I have talked about that. Um, I kind of said a week, but if we need to allow 30 days for people to get discounts, um, some companies, if you have a new roof and you put their sign in your yard, you can get a discount. I know that there's a swimming pool place that does the same thing. So, but again, it boils back down to when I allow these things, I guess I don't want it thrown in my face or Jason's face. Why is this person allowed to have an advertisement sign when our code specifically says we can't? Well, because there's a loophole in just about everything we have. So I want to allow people to have advertisement signs. There's no other sign that's eliminated. And you know, you've got people that talk about, you know, commercial freedom of speech and you know, different things. Call it a thing, call it not a thing, it doesn't matter. Um, so again, it just boils back down to, we have codes that aren't enforceable, just like you said about the political sign. Um, we have people that want to do advertisement signs so they can get discounts on their, on their things. Let them do it. I don't want to be that village where they can't.
Neighbor that put up a Trump sign, it lasted two minutes.
Again, I'm not here to.
He said that it was gone before he got back in the front door.
Right. And to me, that's on that.
That's just a joke, but I mean, it's true.
Right. But again, whatever sign they want to have, I don't care what sign they have. I don't believe we should be infringing on people's freedom of speech. I don't believe we should be removing them. But I will tell you, I have had, and you know, people are allowed to, you know, ask questions and do all of that. But there are questions with people asking, how long are we allowed to leave specific signs in their yard? Their freedom of speech, they can do whatever they want. So we do get those questions regularly. Um, and again, there are some that maybe have, there's some loopholes in there. We'll just say it that way, or non-enforceable things in there. And my point is I would like to see some changes in that. So in the event we, I would like to see it accurate. I mean, if we're not going to, if we can't enforce a political sign, then it needs to come out.
Absolutely. Well, here's an example of what you're talking about. Tony has a neighbor and you know, on the corner there, Tony, the, the large house that was in, in complete disrepair was being flooded in the basement. Yeah, but a guy from Nicholson Remodeling apparently owns that now or bought it and then rehabbed it. And he parks his giant Nicholson remodeling truck in the driveway. If that isn't a sign, I don't know what is, but you can't tell him he can't do that. So that's just an example of, you know, loopholes.
Well, yeah, but they can't keep it anyway. So I guess what I got out of that was that perhaps another item for legislation would be to, to take recommendations on updating the signs, uh, ordinance for street signs.
Yard signs. I'm going to say it as yard signs.
Yard signs. Okay.
I think that's the easiest way to describe it.
So if before the, if you could just let the legislative committee, meaning when, when you're making the decisions. So if before the, if you could just let the legislative committee meeting, when, when you're making the decisions on the fly, which you're doing here. If, if you would just let the legislative committee meeting know what you and Jason are deciding so that we can look at that code. Against what you're doing and see if there's an easy way to. Update it to, to follow along with, or at least it could be debated whether it's. A mayoral fluke, or if it's, we should really just, we should change the ordinance for it.
And I think that's all it means by having support. I mean, it's, it's one of those things that. You have to be able to. Make sure that council has your back, but I, I understand I'm the one that's allowed to enforce it, but there are some that are just messed up. And I need you guys to fix some of the ones that are messed up in order to enforce them the correct way. So I will get with legislative.
Legislation goes, if it's a case by case basis Tiffany, and you're in charge of the code enforcement officer. If, if he's writing citations that really shouldn't be, you can simply dismiss them.
I don't believe he is. I mean, here's what I'm going to say. I don't.
I don't know. I'm just saying you have the power to dismiss a charge if it's obviously something erroneous.
Right. No, I, I don't believe it's anything like that. I think it's more.
Every time he tells someone to get a property improvement permit, he's telling someone to do something that he shouldn't be doing.
For, for some to make a property improvement. That's what we're talking about.
When he, when, when he is writing this. This directive to, to get a property improvement permit, is there a code cited?
No, that's the problem because really what the property improvement permit is for is for zoning approval. But we describe it as a property improvement permit. In reality, it's zoning approval.
I know I may not be the most experienced in this, but it does rub me the wrong way. Yes, people are being handed. Um, you know, uh, zoning issues or fines or fees without. Specific zoning ordinances listed and referenced. I don't know if that's happening or not, but if that's. Is that, that does, that does raise some questions.
By constitutional law, it has to apply the same to everyone, no matter what.
Absolutely.
Do you, do you have a context for one of these? Cause I, I'm just trying to understand when these property improvement. Permits are being required.
I'll, I'll get you a copy of this thing. I worked on all day, Brian. It's the city of Bexley just had to pass.
Tony, that's not what I'm talking about.
I know, but it's.
Okay.
Joe, hold on a second, Joe. That, he is, he, he told someone, I believe that they were putting up, uh, solar panels that they had to get a property improvement permit. When someone replaced the roof, they had to get a property improvement permit in order to be able to get a building permit. You know, the problem is that, like I just said, is that the code calls out for zoning approval. For all applications for permits to build, alter, you know, to build anything, all applications for permits have to be. Uh, have to get zoning approved from planning and zoning. That's the way our code reads. And that's, and they, and Scott Dolinger is the one that came up with this property improvement permit, which really should be called a zoning approval.
If, if I can ask. Is, is there anything functionally or process related different? Between calling it a property improvement permit or a zoning approving, approval. Application.
If you look at the.
Are, oh, wait, hold on. Are all we, is all we are arguing about the name of the stupid form?
I'm trying to explain to you where in the code it called, it says that you need to get. It doesn't say you need to get property improvement permit. It says you need to get zoning approval. Okay?
Okay, so. Okay, let me ask some more questions. So, so Jason goes to the house and sees, sees the solar panels going up and says, ah. You need a property improvement permit. So the person takes that information and comes to the community building and says. Jason said, I need a property improvement permit. Then what happens?
Well, then they have to fill out that.
That's really a question more for Tiffany because she's the one who is there. So they come and they say to you or Becky or whoever's there. Jason said, I need a property improvement permit. What happens then?
I have no idea.
Alright, so.
This is recorded, why?
That, yeah, I mean, people don't know things all the time. That's okay. So. I think that's a good, a good, a good question to get answered. And if what happens is the same thing we would expect to happen for a zoning approval permit or a zoning approval application. Then I think we're just arguing about a name.
Well, I, I think that's where I'm confused. Hang on a second. I think that's kind of where I'm confused at on here. Who's talking? Me or Tony?
It's the, you know, the, the confusion goes even further than that. Because we already, you know, we've stopped, we've stopped, uh. Going to planning and zoning to approve plans for permits. We stopped doing that, but our code still requires. Every application for a permit to build something needs to get approval from planning and zoning. You know, so.
Hold on, Tony, Tony, when, when we, when we administratively changed that process. We also changed the code to indicate that if there is no variance, that approval can be done by a designate. Right? So planning and zoning. I, I will have to go and dig it up. Uh, that'll be my only mission for the week.
Well. Like I said, that's a whole.
And a connected subject, we need, we need. We need legislation to deal with when the city would need to intervene in some of these situations if it got out of hand. In other words, if something grew up to the point where the city had to step in and remove it, like we got a dead person over on, uh, on, um. Uh, the other street over here on, uh, Wildwood. Where a person died and been dead for two months. They got, you know, all kinds of plant problems there. And so what do you do then? There's nobody to go after.
Or is there a dead person on Wildwood?
Well, it's a, it's a giant tree that's gone rotten. It's a hundred feet high. Nobody's doing anything.
Hello, hello, hello. We're way off, way, way, way.
We're not way off. A weed and a tree are somewhere.
Uh, okay. So we were talking about, so, so, okay, so we've, uh. Identified more. Um, we could, with Tony, we could do this all, all night. So, uh, but. Are we going to actually move forward on any one of these to?
First off, I want to clarify one thing. Um, so to, to answer a quick question, because. People come into the village to get a zoning certificate. It is a certificate. That's where the process starts. They fill out the piece of paper. They come in there, they get the zoning certificate. That is then taken to Franklin County. That is for roofs, windows, um, anything like that. So if they're doing a deck, if they're doing a patio. Um, whatever they have to get a zoning permit for, or anything that they have to get a building permit, they have to go to Franklin County. So what we give them is a zoning certificate. They go to Franklin County, they get all their permitting, they move on from there. So there, as of right now, we are not charging residents for. Roof, windows, doors. Those types of things, even though it's on the fee sheet, that was also one of the things that I don't believe residents should have to pay. We pay enough in taxes that, and we do not go inspect those things. So. They get a zoning certificate, they take it to Franklin County, that's where they pay their fee. So what he's talking about with a property per improvement permit, I'm just going to go with, that's where, again, that's where I'm confused. I don't know. Um, exactly what we're talking about. Is that the, the actual zoning certificate that's taken to Franklin County to do? The windows and doors and all that kind of stuff? I'm not sure. So this is where I'm just going to say it. I have no.
Quick, quick question. Do we have a committee, uh, that, that doesn't, uh, tran- you know. Translate over to yet more, one more committee about this, because. We could study this thing out in a committee and come up with recommendations.
Which committee? I thought it was community or.
Well, part of. To go back to the same thing, part of the issue that we have with council's involvement is, is Tony is in fact correct when he does talk about. It is actually code enforcement does in fact fall under a. Committee. So again, it boils back down to words, it, let me just say it, it's.
That doesn't mean they interfere with, if, if I, as a council person, whether I'm on the committee, that committee or any committee. If I have a, as a council person, if I, if I have a neighbor and I feel that they were wrong by code enforcement. I would, I as a council person would do the research, we'll get the code. Uh, have a discussion and if, if appropriate, make recommendations to have it changed. I won't sit in the council meeting going blah, blah, blah. I mean, let's just get something done here, ladies and gentlemen.
Right. And in the meantime, if it's an obvious mistake, the mayor can fix it by just dismissing it.
With that in mind, um.
I'm not saying our code enforcement would issue those.
To the HVAC, let's skip over Mudrakers because that'll be another forty-five minutes. Skip to the HVAC quote as I think we can deal with that and get action on it in just a few minutes and get it checked off a list. And then maybe something else. I don't know, but definitely this.
Okay, and it's eight oh three, so.
I would say as well, the, the outsourcing of payroll. Those two, I think we should. Move up to now so we can get them addressed, get our opinions and go.
Okay.
HVAC, you guys have all of the stuff.
So we're, we're sending this to a committee is how we should finish it, isn't it?
Already in a committee. That's the problem.
The, the thing is you have to know what the problem is. You have to agree to what the problem is before you can. You decide if you want to fix it or not. So.
That's why I worked on trees all day. I wasn't going to bring it up, but I'm going to wait until I had very specific, very definitive, very good answers to the thick work brought it up.
Okay, alright. So we do have two things. Uh, uh, one in particular, uh, Paycor, maybe we should start with that one because that one, uh, Tiffany is looking to expedite. So why don't we do Paycor first?
Um, we've reached out to Paycor as you guys, I'm going to make this as fast as possible. As you guys know. Um, we are looking to outsource our, um, payroll. Uh, we have approximately fifty employees. Um, you guys have all of the quotes. I sent it to everybody. Um, there is a need to, in the event we decide we even want to do this. There is a need to put this on a little bit of a fast track to actually have the fourth quarter done from Paycor. Um, we didn't want to start it until the fourth quarter in the middle of a quarter and all that kind of stuff. So there is, there is an actual logical reason as to why we're trying to do it. There is a lot of prep work as most people are probably aware because we are doing this mid-year. Um. The, the reason that we want to get this done is right now payroll is actually falling on court week as well. Um, and is going to be for the next quite a while. Um, so what that does is that actually puts Leah into doing all of mayor's court and payroll during the same week. Um, in the event that Leo were to get sick, heaven forbid she go on vacation in which she and both Becky are scheduled to go on vacation next month. Um, we're at a limited time to being able to get all of the information for Paycor to be done by October eleventh. So we are, I am looking for, A, do you guys have any interest in, in outsourcing payroll? Um, because right now it falls on one person. If that one person is sick, payroll does not get processed for your fifty employees. Heaven forbid, it's not happened at this point, but we've been on a fine line. Um, I already know most of you guys, if not all of you guys are completely on board with that. So then my next question is. Um, can we do waive the readings, pass it as an emergency on Monday, the twenty-fourth? If you guys have a huge appetite for not waving readings and all of that, I am all ears for when you guys want to schedule twenty-four hour advanced, um, readings for it. That way, if anybody has any problems, questions, concerns, we could do the first meeting literally Wednesday, one Friday and then Monday. Um, we don't have. The issue is, is an emergency. Um, I'm going to make it quick. No, I mean, we could start at January first, but we have always been doing this. But flying by the seat of our pants. It takes one day for her to be sick and. We don't get paid. Simple.
No, she will still have one job. I've sent you all these federal statutes that I'm sure you've read. And the only job she would have to do is make certain. That any tax withholding money does not end up on an account by Paycor, which I wouldn't think would be in their agreement, but it needs to be checked. So she would still need to make the deposits.
Exactly. So here's what I'm going to tell you. Again, we're going through Paycor. We're going through the same company that other municipalities are going through. Um, that have police departments and have all of those things. We are limited to the, to the people that we could actually use for that purpose. Um, the, having the access of Mifflin, Mifflin, um, that's one of the ones that uses them and one of the ones that recommended them. We would have, she has a direct link. Any problems, questions, concerns, they are more than happy to help assist, um, with the setup. As well as Paycor, obviously. So it's basically up to you guys. I'm not, I'm not telling you, clearly, I'm not telling you guys what to do. But we are looking to have it done sooner rather than later, um, because the prep work takes a long time and. Again, it's, it's, we all knew that it was going to end up being a lot with mayor's court and all of this being on one person, but. We, we've done it since March and now we're looking to go ahead and move it forward. Diane and I had talked about it last year. This isn't anything new. Um, but I don't know the app, nobody wants to do anything as an emergency, but this is basically, again, this is payroll. So we're not looking to buy a building or do anything like that.
By doing this as an emergency, by doing this as an emergency or not, doesn't change a thing. It simply, a, a good, like Paycor can, they're less likely to make mistakes on this than we are. And mistakes are cost a lot of money.
Mistakes do cost a lot of money and we're still paying for some of them from the first quarter of the year. So everybody's already aware of it.
I guess.
Did, did I hear correctly this more, this afternoon and maybe I didn't. Um, that we could, if we wait, if we passed it soon enough. We could waive readings but not pass it as an emergency and it's still coming in time for us to make the change over.
Not necessarily. Yes and no. I mean, it's up to you guys. No, Leah's on vaca- what Kim didn't know is Leah's on vacation that next month.
Okay.
So she was not, no, we, yes, we could do it. Um, but there's, we have zero prep time. And let me rephrase that. We have about seven days of prep time instead of forty. Um, because it would pass if we did it the twenty-fourth, waived the readings and waited the thirty days. That would put us to September twenty-fourth and I don't want to tell everybody when she's going on vacation. So we'll just leave it at that. Um, but it's going to interfere. So no, we would be left to zero prep time.
I'd like to make one point. When we turned the payroll over to a payroll firm, it's not changing the thing. It doesn't hire anybody, doesn't fire anybody. It doesn't change what their tax liabilities or withholdings are. So there really isn't any change. It's just somebody else doing the calculating. And we end up with it in the end anyway. So it's not being farmed out in that.
Point, we're, 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 we're very much behind. We're going to farm this out to.
Yeah, I understand.
Um, our, our debate now is do we want to waive readings and pass it as an emergency or not? Um, we, we know we're going to.
And I was saying at the point is what, considering an emergency or not, whether there's any change being made and there isn't. So I don't see an objection to. A legitimate objection to, you know, not passing it as an emergency. We're not changing it.
What we're changing is that we're, we're paying six thousand dollars a year at, at approximately six thousand dollars a year. For this service. And there may be some residents who don't like that idea, just don't like that idea and.
Objection is we're not giving the residents time to hear it three times. And we're not, we're taking away their right of referendum.
Correct.
Um, that is why, and I remember, I think somewhere like my second or third meeting, I was like, pass everything by emergency. Who cares? Get it done. And then someone had to point out to me, when you pass it by emergency. There's no citizen referendum. They can't come and overturn it. So that's, that's the big change is whether or not we give. The residents of River Park a chance to say, hey.
Right.
We're not down with this. Why did you do that? Stop it.
Well, Tiffany, approximately, do you have any idea how much these mistakes have cost us in the past?
Um, one of the IRS.
Dollars isn't very much money.
Uh, it's just a couple of grand.
In the past.
One employee may have that much in withholdings for all we know.
Right. Um, some of the issues that we had with payroll, just a real quick one, and I don't know how much you guys even already know about this, but. Um, we had some people that were paid too much, um, that we had to work to recoup that money back. We had some that were short. We have. Um, some people's accounts that are. I've, you know, FOP numbers are, they're just not right. So. Um, the unfortunate part is, is it's not just the mistakes. It's the amount of time that it's going to take. They're still not all fixed. So. It's a matter of time going back and recouping this money that was prepaid to somebody that should have never been done. Leah knows exactly what she's doing. She has Kim in her back pocket. There is not mistakes made. Um, at this point in time, it has not been since then. Um, but again, things happen. We could end up, you know. A year from now with a new fiscal officer and back in the same problem. So I think that's why everybody's on board. I don't think we're arguing that. I think the point of the matter is, is, is there an appetite to pass it? Is there an appetite to adding a? I think the point of the matter is, is, is there an appetite to pass it? Is there an appetite to adding additional um, dates for a meeting just to read the first and second and third? I am, I'm looking to do this in the fourth quarter, but if there's not an appetite to do it, it is your guys' decision. I do not want to step on toes. You know what we're asking for and why we're asking for it. Um, you know, maybe take the next couple of days, see if anybody complains about it and see where we are with that, but um, that, that's what we want to, that's what we need to do in order to get it started for the fourth quarter, is we will.
The six thousand dollars will save us money. I can give you all that promise, but you can believe me or not.
Well, the alternative is, the alternative is we have to hire somebody to have a second backup person because we are, we are on borrowed time that we have never had an issue.
Well, the whole point I'm trying to make is the instant, and I mean the microsecond, that a withholding is made, the money belongs to the federal government and they're the jurisdiction. It's not our money. So if we're paying quarterly, there's a lot of money accumulated. If that gets fouled up, then we could be personally held liable as well as held liable as a village for this and, and Paycor, provided they don't abscond with withholding money, which we'll make sure they can't, then there's no downside to this but the expense. And that's not much expense compared to what we face if we goof it up.
Right. And again, we, we were, we were already fined once for not paying bills on time, not paying the IRS on time, been there, done that.
They collect the money too. Did they freeze the account and take it, or did they just ask for it and you sent it real fast?
It was just, it was just a bill.
So I guess where we are now is, so we're going to have the next, the next council meeting, next Monday, we're gonna have the readings, where they're gonna have the first reading or we're gonna waive readings. So if, if everybody wants to sleep on us and then.
Exactly.
Tell them, you know, whether you're okay with the waiving an emergency or not, and then we, but we're gonna proceed with the reading on Monday regardless.
Perfect.
The only thing I want to point out also, that Tiffany also says, for those of you who may not, you know, it, it's not like this date, the date that they start, um, that they start using this, the new system, it, it can't move. It's, it has to be the start of the, the first payroll period in the fourth quarter. It, it can't move, if, if, if they can't make that date, then, then they would have to wait till January first. It's a really hard, it's a hard date, not a soft date, so.
Decision is, do we want this to start at the start of the fourth quarter? Or are we okay with waiting till January?
Correct. If we're that, if we're, enough people are just really dead set on not having an emergency, then I think it would have to be pushed to January one. I don't see a way around that, so, um, okay, alright.
I haven't read, I haven't read the contract, but the money, whatever withholdings they do, uh, they should be taken out of our accounts and either put in a special account that was owned by Minerva Park and solely controlled by Minerva Park, or it's an IRS escrow account.
No, it's, they've, it's all in there on the contract.
Okay, well, I, I haven't read it, but.
Yeah, no, it's in there. It's, it's, it's a common practice. Uh, so HVAC quote.
So I emailed that to everybody, as everybody's fully aware, and, and I talked about this in the last meeting. Um, we did get an HVAC quote, um, it talks about air purifying, it talks about all of that kind of stuff, reinventing. Um, you guys have the estimate in front of you, it's a little over fourteen thousand dollars. We have money from the CARES Act, our intent is to use the CARES Act money, what we don't use, we lose. Um, but there is the, the caveat that in the event that they decide that this is not a viable reason to use the CARES Act money, they could come back and say, no, you can't use the money for that and you, we're not paying for that. Um, I talked to Jesse and Jean, and the quick answer is, um, this money did not come with a list of you can use it for A and you can use it for B, but you can't use it for C. It did not come with that. Um, basically, it needs to be used for COVID-related, um, expenses in our mind, in my mind, in whoever's mind, because we can all take, you know, everybody is gonna be given the same information. The CDC and many other, um, places that you read, they definitely do talk about the air quality and, um, when you go to reopen your buildings, making sure that, you know, you try to vent the building and you have a good airflow. We do not have a good airflow, everybody's aware, we don't have a good airflow, we have one of the worst systems, the oldest systems. He believes that the original, that one of our, um, ACs is from the eighties, the other one is from the nineties, there is actually two. So we already know we're on borrowed time, we spend several hundred dollars every single year, um, just to get the thing up and running and it's probably cost us over a thousand dollars already this year because they not only, they've already been out several times. Because it's, it is, it is working, I will say that, it is currently working. Um, but anyways, I've said.
What's in this, uh, system that filters the air?
Yes.
Is it some special HEPA filter or?
Yes, it's all of the above. So, um, it is supposed to, and it is supposed to be, I'll say it this way, when I talked to him on the phone, I told him exactly what I was looking for, exactly what I was trying to accomplish. Um, they came out, we talked to him for quite a while, they showed us what's wrong with our current system, why it doesn't work appropriately. Um, yada, yada, yada. So at the end of the day, yes, this is supposed to, um, make our system better quality, filter the system and everything.
Yeah, yeah.
And it'll actually work.
I'll explain this. COVID is a point one micron diameter virus, it'll go through any filter there is. And, uh, the issue is, they now know pretty much COVID's airborne. So if you're in a closed environment, you don't have very much air circulation and that means outside air. Then, uh, people in a closed environment are at risk. We've all read about the parties where everybody went home with COVID. So, uh, the air ventilation system in a commercial building, unlike a residential building, uh, allows for an adjustment to how much outside air is brought into the system to ventilate. And that should be part of the system if we don't have it now.
We do not have it now.
The only thing that'll kill the virus is ultraviolet light, they have systems you can put in your, uh, air ventilation system that'll kill the virus. That's probably pretty expensive, but it is only ultraviolet light, they make some things people put in their houses for that.
Okay, so.
There's, well, eight point three microns and this virus is point one, or pardon me, it's three microns and this is point one.
So basically, the HVAC quote was sent to everybody. Um, this is, again, left up to you guys, this is not an emergency situation, we can do the three readings, we can do whatever. I would like to start the three readings because, again, the money has to be used by December. Um, so we are at the end of August. I mean, at this point, I think the biggest thing that we have to remember is this year is we're, we're counting down the days to where our three readings in thirty days are gonna put us to the end of the year. So I think we can all agree to that.
I think we can use the point where we can just say, is there anyone here who wants to give a reason why we should not move forward with this? And bill it to the CARES Act, which I personally am comfortable saying, am ninety percent sure that they'll say, yes, this is considered part of spending for this. Is there anyone who has a reason why we shouldn't move on this?
Well, if, if we're doing something that has absolutely no effect on the, uh, transmission of COVID in the airspace, we should, uh, look at the details of that, but I'm sure that's been taken into account. But I haven't read it. In other words, like I said, uh, the virus is point one micron, it'll go through anything. It just gets blown around by a ventilation system and, and basically makes it more contagious than it already is and less you put into their measures that take care of the problem. One is putting outside air mixed in with the regular air and the other one would be to actually do something to try and kill the virus. And we probably couldn't have meetings in there safely until we do something.
That's the purpose of doing all of this, is to try to get us back into the building. Um, that said, we have been back in the building, I have, um, any, a group of EMS, I have a group of police officers, I have myself and everybody else back in there. We've not had any issues, problems at this point in time. Um, but we still know that the air quality could be a lot better. Um, and we do all believe that this is something that would be money well spent in the event that it does work out. We also know that if it doesn't work out and we do have to pay for it, this is something that we are going to need to do um, in the extreme near future. Um, we have, every time they come out, they tell us that we're on borrowed time. Um, and everybody knows that, that's not a surprise, Brian, I know that this has been an ongoing thing from when you were on council two years ago. I mean, it's not anything anybody's surprised to hear that our HVAC is completely shot. Um, it is currently working, um, but that's because we have put Band-Aids on it for the last five years. Eventually, it's not gonna come on.
Well, let's do it then. My goodness, we can, we can afford the money even if the CARES Act falls through.
We should get it ready for Monday's reading and move to our next item.
Perfect. And I will not do that one as an emergency, we'll just go along and, you know, um, that's gonna be up to you guys if you want to waive one or this or that, we can look at the calendar, but at this point, I'm not gonna do that one as an emergency or anything.
No, but we should be a little forward looking on this because all the state requirements, county requirements, uh, municipal requirements have not caught up with COVID yet. So this whole thing about ventilation, there are certain codes and specifics that have to be met and these, with COVID around, we need to exceed those, they probably have recommendations that I doubt that they passed as law yet, uh, or as codes. We should just make certain we spend the money, it does something.
Well, regardless, regardless of, regardless of whether this is, we're not gonna be a hospital-grade facility here.
No, that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about.
What I'm saying is, is that there is no, you know, there's, there's no air circulation in the place, there hasn't been. And we use fans and so, you know, this, this, this actually would make it to be a, a real life, livable.
Right. And that completely boils down to how much outside air is brought into the system each time. It's, there, there's a thing called air changes. Now, the code requires seven air changes per hour in any building. Well, okay.
Are, are you, are you concerned that Atlas Butler, uh, does not know the code or would, would be?
No, I'm saying the code, codes are out of date, but that we could be forward looking and just make certain there's a range to which we can decide how much outside air is brought in. Now, a normal residential air system doesn't bring outside air in. They tell you to go open your window.
This is a municipal building. I mean, this is a municipal.
We should have at least a ten percent outside air brought in per hour. And that might, I don't know if we have that or not, but it might require, you know, some ductwork put in to the outside to bring the air in and a damper that's automated that goes in. And I don't know if they planned that or not, because I haven't seen the plan.
I sent it to everybody.
Uh, huh?
I sent the, I sent the HVAC to everybody. Do you guys all have it?
Yeah, no, I read it, I read it over and it doesn't get into that level of detail, but, but I'm sure that we could, we could send questions to you or
Absolutely.
Questions and then I can answer the questions.
Absolutely.
Okay, alright, um. So, uh, it is now eight twenty-four, um, who's up for whatever, or do we want to, uh, we've got the late, the mudrappers, the basketball court, AMI meeting. The AMI meeting is just, this is just to remind everybody else on the twenty-fourth, and you did send out the list of items, Tiffany, thank you. And, um, the facility architect meetings are set for the twenty-fifth from six to eight, I assume they're gonna be Zoom meetings. Um, and the basketball court, um, there was, you know, again on Facebook, I'm sure you saw it, another request that this case of police be there at closing time during these, uh, is it just the weekends when they get the biggest crowds where people are, the kids are speeding out of the area and, uh, of course leaving out the trash. I didn't know if there's any, the.
I don't know how, I don't know how, you know, when the people are leaving there, it's not like a set time, you know.
It isn't? I mean, don't they just, they finish a game and leave? No? I don't know, I haven't seen it. I'm, I'm not around that area.
They're up until dark and, you know, those, you know, but what I'm trying to say is, I don't know what else the police can do. Except for, you know, have someone stationed at basketball, I mean, I.
Well, if the police are in the building, what, what, uh, can come out of a police budget versus, you know, a municipal budget for the building?
All I'm, all I'm saying is.
What I'm suggesting is a release inquiry, but where if they can put an ultraviolet system in that kills the virus.
We're talking about the basketball court right now.
I know, I'm trying to get that in before it goes by.
Well, you're, you're gonna email that, uh, question about the air change to Tiffany so that she can, you know, collect questions and ask Atlas Butler what.
Just that, real quickly, I'll say, as for a background, many, many years ago, every operating room in every hospital in Ohio switched over to ultraviolet light systems and they closed the operating room for eight hours per day, the ultraviolet lights sterilized the room. And so this is what kind of technology's been around a long time, used in certain places, it may, uh, kind of become more applicable to other spaces, that's all I'm saying. I'll send it to Tiffany.
Yeah, send it to me. Okay, um, I, I'm gonna talk about, I'm gonna take the horn here for the basketball court. Um, I have a lot to say, except I'm gonna try to keep this brief so we can go to the last thing, because I think we really need to talk about, um, the muck sucker place, so. The police officers have sat there for over a week last week, or the entire week last week. They did write a couple tickets, nothing in excessive of thirty-seven was the highest speed over there, which is not acceptable, I will agree with that. Um, to imply that the basketball court is the only reason people are speeding is, um, wrong, because we are issuing tickets of people going well into the forty mile an hour range on Minerva Lake Road. Um, it is an unfortunate situation that people are speeding everywhere. Um, we are not alone in the speed issues. They're going on, a-again, they're going on everywhere. Um, I don't know when the last time you guys saw the city of Columbus actually pull over a car, but I'm gonna go with it doesn't really happen right now. Um, unfortunately, I believe maybe people know that, but I will be the first to admit that I do not appreciate the speeding, I don't agree with it, it is what it is. Um, the police officers are doing everything that they can, we have over twenty streets in the village, we have two officers. Um, they are doing the best that they can possibly do. We are stationing them over in that particular area, again, almost every single day last week, that's where they were. Um, they have been there all day today. I have been at the basketball court four times so far today, I have talked to the kids that are over there um, to ask them politely to not, a-again, I'm, I'm not sure what's so hard about just walking over there and say, hey, can you, there's a trash can there, there's a trash can there, I do it constantly. Um, I, I would do it even if I wasn't the mayor, so, you know, I think having a little courtesy and just walk, I, I understand that these kids are brats, that's great, I have a couple downstairs. Um, and they're not throwing away their trash, but I, I, I could go in circles about this all day. It's frustrating that people blame the basketball court for every single thing that happens in this village right now. Um, and I'm, I'm going a little out there on that one, but anyways, um, the speeding is out of line.
Accurate though, according to Facebook pages.
I will be the first to say the speeding is out of line, but the speeding is not exclusive of the basketball court. Um, and the officers are aware. I will also say that Facebook, the MPCA Facebook page is not the place to report a crime. Please, if anybody is watching this, call the police if you see somebody going sixty miles an hour. That's all I have to say about that.
You can't even go to picture their license plate when they're.
Right, I do not watch Facebook all day and, and I, I, I just can't. Um, and our chief of police is the only person that is on our Facebook page, none of the other officers are on our Facebook page, they are not residents of the village of Minerva Park. So he does see it periodically, he also sees it when I tell him about it. But other than that, on Saturday night, he is not on our Facebook page. It is a tool, it is not the tool. Um, and I cannot stress that enough, I will tell you that in the last week, there has been umpteen complaints on Facebook, but there has been one phone call to the police department. So please, if you're going, i- if you're seeing it, call them, that's how you have record of it. Okay, the last thing I'm gonna say is this basketball court should not be residence only. I took my child to Hoff Park this weekend, which is in Westerville. I don't pay Westerville taxes, but they don't tell me that my child needs to be a resident of Westerville to use their courts. Um, I think it's kind of selfish of us to continue to say that, you know, other, other kids can't, shouldn't be playing at our court. Um, I have a church next door, I don't see the pastor coming over and telling my kids that we aren't members of their church, that my kids can't come over there and play, so.
Well, I don't think, I don't think it's totally legal to have a public space and then start restricting based on residents who can be there.
Correct.
And even if it were. We can't say they're walking down the street in Minerva Park and so therefore they're violating, you know, that.
Right.
Tell them to get out.
So I'm gonna end with this. The basketball court continues to be a hotspot, it continues to be very active over there. I am going to continue to do everything in my power to go over there and remind kids to not speed and to throw away their trash. I have been doing it, I have gone over the numerous times throughout the last three weeks as the complaints have occurred. I have been over there four times today, this is eight thirty, and I do plan on leaving straight from here, Brian, you live right there, you're gonna see my car as soon as this ends. Um, the police department is doing absolutely everything they possibly can to deter speed. Um, it is a work in progress. Um, I just hope that residents understand that there, this is a, these kids are there, they're playing. I, 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 I don't really know what else to say other than the fact that we are doing everything that we can. Um, there is gonna be signage put up, we did order two signs for the park closes at dusk. Uh, those, as soon as they come in, those will be plastered up there, um, just like everything else. Uh, those, as soon as they come in, those will be plastered up there, um, just like everything else. Um, we do not have a list of rules yet. I know Brian is going to help work on that in the safety committee meeting. Um, obviously it's going to be throw away your trash and that kind of stuff. Um, kids know that they're supposed to throw away their trash. Unfortunately, I, I'm not giving excuses. My kid doesn't throw away his trash either. So I, 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 I don't want to call him a horrible human being because he forgets to throw away his trash. So I think that, you know, we should expect these kids to do it. Um, and we will continue to work on it. And again, if you see somebody going sixty, call the police.
Also, I think under state law, littering is a five hundred dollar fine, if you want to get tough about it.
Okay, so, um, that's, that's it for basketball. And, uh, so we want to talk about the mudruckers.
So I'll, I'll let Joe talk a little bit about that. As you guys know, I know he would, Joe has been in contact with them. I have been in contact with them. I did ask them a couple additional questions at the end, um, after we had talked about it last week. Um, I asked them if they would be interested because obviously only filling one thirty by fifty, if they're coming out here, why don't we just have them do more? Um, they have no interest in doing that right now. Um, we have a lot of sticks and things like that in our lake and they are concerned about that. They also only are interested in doing a trial run. Um, so this is just a little bit of info for you guys. As far as, you know, it, it basically, all this is, is a trial run. Simple as that. It's not going to solve any problems. It's going to let us see how long it takes this to dry out, how long it takes them to, it says that it takes seven days for them to fill it up and do all of the things that they need to do. It's twenty-one thousand dollars. It's, do you guys want to do it? Do you not want to do it? Do you guys want to try it? Um, it is not a solve all problems. Um, before I let you guys fight it out, I'm going to remind everybody right now, because I have promised that I would bring this up tonight. Um, because I don't have an answer and I'm the first to always admit to people when I don't know what to tell people. Um, Pat and Paul Miller's house is, their backyard is horrific right now. They have got weeds. The whole lake is full of weeds. Um, I know Joe already knows that.
When you say horrific, what can, what do you mean? It's full of weeds?
It is, it, it, their backyard, yeah. The lake, I'm going to call it the lake. The lake is.
Used to be a lake.
It's not a lake. It, it is. It's, it's pure green weeds. Um, it is not a lake. It is not just a little bit. It is awful. Um. I'm not in disagreeance.
Come out of it and, and clouds.
Yeah, I, so, um, he's wanting to know what he needs to do to get rid of the um, weeds. I, I, I don't have a great answer for him, but I, I'm not in disagreements with him. This is supposed to be a lake. We have neglected, and I'm going to use the word we, I've only been here for seven months, whatever, and half of which is COVID. Um, I've been on council for two years. Um, we know this lake has been neglected for twenty plus years. I don't think it's ever been dredged. But now we're getting to the point that it's not even going to be a lake if we continue on this path. And I think we'll all agree with that. I don't have anything else to say, only because everybody's heard it a hundred times from me. We have to do something. And Paul and Pat Miller deserve some answers as to what to do with their backyard that used to be a lake that is now full of weeds.
I was accosted by my other neighbor an hour ago about this. His arms were bleeding from mosquito bite. Mine are too. And that's coming out of the same weeds behind, Paul and Pat won't come out of their house.
I'm, I'm not in disagreements on the, on the, on the mosquito spraying. Um, that's something that honestly, our hands were tied and forced.
No, but malaria is now becoming a thing mosquitoes can carry as well as, uh, you know, uh, West Nile. That's true.
Focus, focus.
So. I am focused. The mosquitoes are growing in the same weeds.
So this, is this about, okay, so now do we want to change the topic to mosquito spraying or do we want to stick with the lake?
Let's stick with the lake.
Of course we're sticking with the lakes. That's the topic. I was adding part of the lake's problem to the, to the discussion.
So we're, so we're talking about the sediment removal. My, my point here is that, that in terms of if this, if Paul's property is tied into the sediment removal solution, if, you know, it is clear they use scuba divers. Now, if he has nothing that, there is nothing to scuba, scuba in that, that.
They don't need divers. They can walk.
They think it, well, yes, when, when Russell Tree, when Russell Tree came out last year, I, I took pictures. I was there watching them and, you know, they did use a kayak, but because, just because if he went in this sediment, he would have sunk on up to his, probably his hips. But anyway, there's, there's less than twelve inches or there's twelve, twenty-four inches if you go out a little further. There's nothing, there's, there's no sucking, sucking up with scuba divers. It's kind of nothing to, it, it's not a solution for something so shallow. And that's not what they described. And if you go to their website, which I did, and you, and you look at their YouTube videos, which I did, I mean, they got, they have a, they show a body of water where they're going underneath the water. So we're talking ten feet. And they're going out into the middle and they're saying the best solution is to suck it out of the mid- middle, not to suck it out around the edges, suck it out of the middle. How does that, if we went and did that as an experiment, how does that help that area specifically?
I would argue that it doesn't. I'd say that would be two different issues.
Right.
I know. Well, you, you can say that all you want. The government will make ten issues out of it. In, in the real life, it's one spot.
Oh, I agree. The lake, it's all interconnected. I agree.
Well, I, I spoke with them a lot and they came recommended by Ryder Company, who's a giant contractor that does all the city of Columbus work. This company's working for, uh, them and the city of Columbus down in Goodale Park right now doing it. That's how I got their name. I had to talk to them a lot to even get them to consider this. But what they, uh, offered to do because, and the reason it's a subject so quickly is they could still do this little part of the job this year. In other words, we don't lose a whole year on this, but we learn a lot from this. Now, this company, their concern is there's trees underneath this muck. I don't know if there are or not. I happen to, as Diane was just alluding to, the trees that have come down, whether it took a lot to do or not, we worked on having those removed before they got under the muck. So I don't know that there are trees in there. They won't know till they dry. But they use pumps. They come in with boats. They don't need to drain the lakes. In fact, the more water in the lakes are better and they pump the muck out. They, if there's trees and big sticks in there, the pumps don't work, but we don't know that.
Plug this thing up. I've looked into dredging and this material that is a lot of sticks that are not going to easily be sucked up. And that's why I don't think this is the, the way to go about fixing.
If it has to do with the lakes, Tony, you don't think anything has a right to go any which place. Uh, you've got something against it. Personally, but I, I won't get into that. Situation. This is an opportunity for twenty thousand dollars instead of two hundred, ten thousand dollars to find out if the general method of doing the wet dredging works better than dry dredging, which it, we're talking about a half million dollars. And somebody can say whatever they want, but it would start at that. So it's a recommended company that has a, you know, trial solution for a relatively small amount of money. If it works, it'll solve Paul and Pat's problem, but it'll solve Paul and Pat's problem, but it, you know, everybody else too.
I, if you were going to do this, it isn't, and twenty thousand, two sixty-seven is the base. That doesn't include all the other, uh, that doesn't include getting the bed ready, getting the mulch outs, blah, blah. There's a lot of stuff in there that they, they don't do, uh, that you have to provide.
Oh, yeah.
And of course, once it's all dried out, once it's all dried out, it's, it's up to us to then figure out what to do with it.
Now, we have, we have places we could isolate to put the muck where it can dry out, where, other than hanging it in Tony's front yard.
Well, it has to fit in this, it has to fit in the tube first, which requires a certain amount of what, twenty by fifty or thirty by fifty?
This, this muck is, this muck is a consistency of dried leaves with a little mud on it.
It has to find a place to put that tube, inner tube thing in the first place. And then after it's dried out, we, it's up to us to do something about. The only place that we have that we could actually do a quote experiment would be if we, if we went over, if we used the other side of the, the damn walkway, put it in where we mow right now and run the tube into the south lake.
There's also a huge ravine. There's also a huge ravine that comes off of, uh, uh, Wildwood. And, uh, you know, muck could be put in there if we had to. And, uh, that would be.
The solution doesn't put muck someplace. This solution puts, puts mucks in these inner tube things.
No, but we could go the other way. We could just have the whole lake dredged. They got a bill for that. So here's. This is a top company that's, this is just a very good company that comes recommended that can do this a, as a favor to us pretty much more than themselves. I don't probably doubt they make any money. But we would find a lot of stuff out. And if this method works, it would save us a lot of money on the lakes altogether. And it would, you know, they, what they recommended and what, uh, personally I would recommend, whether I live next to it or not, would be that they take the blockage out of the storm sewer that's going into Northlake. Every drop of stormwater that actually comes from Minerva Park comes down the north storm sewer. The stormwater that comes in from the south comes under the bridge from Cleveland. It's all from Columbus. So this is virtually all of the stormwater in Minerva Park. It goes down through this channel and tries to get into the lake from this end and it's plugged up.
So, yeah, but that's not what this quote is for. So that's different, right?
We have.
Quote is for.
Well, we, we have, if I'm not mistaken from my earlier finance meeting today, somewhere in the neighborhood of seventy-five to a thousand dollars that was already appropriated in this year's budget to do things to help remedy the lake. We are in August. We have not found anyone willing to come out and do anything big. We have found one company that's saying twenty-two thousand, maybe that's the start, maybe it's thirty thousand at the end of it. And we will come out and see if it works. It's as much a trial run for them as it is for us.
It'll work where they work on.
Excuse me, Joe, I have not interrupted you. We can sit here and debate whether we think it's going to work or not. Or we can spend a fifth of the money that's already been appropriated for us to do something this year and give it a try. And if it doesn't work, then that sucks because it doesn't work and it doesn't help us. But then at least we can say, well, this solution doesn't work. Let's move to the next one.
We have.
Agree with you, but assuming it won't work is where.
I'm not assuming it won't work. Joe, what I'm saying is, let's make the call. Let's get them out here and see if they can do something. And if they can, and we can do it again, great. And if they can't, that sucks. Now we know we have to find somebody else.
Well, I agree with you completely. I just want to make an important point. It isn't a question of whether it works or not. Where they work on it, it will work. What they're saying is they're at enough time left this year to work on anymore in a small park.
Good. Then let's have them out there and let's see that, let's do that.
Just call Pat Miller's park, but that's just because it's in their backyard. It's, it's Village Lake, not Paul.
Let's go around, let's, let's just go around and see who's in favor or not. I am not in favor of moving forward with this project. Anybody?
I am in favor. We have the money. We, we should at least try something, make a good faith effort for our people. If we, we, if we learn that it works, we may end up saving a huge amount of money in the long run. If it doesn't work, well, not, not, you know, nothing ventured, nothing gained.
I'm in favor of it because nobody has come up with anything that says it won't work. What they're saying is they can only work on a small part of it. Now, that's not going to work for the whole thing, obviously, but it will work where they work on it.
Yeah, it's not a comprehensive solution, but it seems to be a good step in the right direction should everything pan out.
Well, some people, and I could provide you all with this information if you want it, where they have done work and done a complete job, it does work. They're doing Goodale Park right now.
Goodale Park's got a little cement pond that they're working on, Joe.
I know, and they're tearing the whole thing out, rebuilding it. It's certainly more, more than twenty-one.
Brian, do you have?
You said you're for it. We need Brian and Diane.
Yeah. To me, it sounds like forward progress. This is the first positive action that has been, this is the closest we've gotten to positive action on the lakes.
It's the cleanup.
You know, and, and the cleanups were nice, but I don't think that even the cleanups are on the scale of, of this. Right? This is the first sizable positive action that we've had. Uh, and so I, I would not stop positive action.
Well, I don't, wouldn't put down the cleanup either because we made some really good progress with that.
Things happen, but I, I don't, it's not, certainly not on the scale of, of.
No, we could only do the areas where when the lake's not a little lower, we could get to them. That's all. But we did do those parts and they look great.
And Diane, your thoughts?
My, uh, uh, my thought is that, uh, if I, I had, I suspect that this, once they come out, they're, they're going to see that we don't have any proper place to put this tube and, and what we're going to do is too shallow. I, I don't think it's going to work out. I think we could, if you want to go to the next step with this, um, and, uh, and, and talk to them, uh, then of course, go ahead. I suspect that they're gonna, I suspect they're going to walk away from this, but but maybe not. I, I, um, I do think though that, you know, we, we, because, you know, we got in this situation especially, it got worse for Paul because we have been trying to lower the lake. And that just exacerbated this situation.
That's not it.
That exacerbated because it's.
Lake not being as deep as it was.
It's not as deep and then it's slower. It's both. It's, it's just, I'm saying that exacerbated a problem that was already there. And we, we're just trying to do two things that we're doing this and then we're doing that. So, um,
What's for that part?
Because we don't have a, a, a plan.
It's already for council people have agreed.
I, I'm not gonna, you know, it, it, there's twenty, it's actually the lake account is, uh, we just need a clarification on that. I think it was twenty-five thousand. So if, uh, if this, if this group comes out and, and you guys can figure out where to put this huge tube and, you know, they agree to suck out some, but they're certainly not gonna, they're not gonna suck out his backyard. That's for sure. I, 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 go ahead.
It's not his backyard. It's their village lake.
I know it is. I'm sorry. I should have said that.
They've never said it's not going to work. But they said is they can only work on a small portion of the lake. It would be an experiment where we could find a lot of information.
It's just, they're only going to be here for seven days and, and seven days for four hours. In the half, half days, they're actually going to suck and then the other half they're going to be sucking out.
No, but what it basically accomplishes Diane is it determines whether the wet or dry method is necessary to do the lakes. The wet method is so much cheaper. It's ridiculous. So for this twenty-one thousand dollars, we could learn a lot.
We, we have, we have to have the, 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 the problem with the wet method two years ago and a year ago was the fact that where are you going to put the, the tubes? Where are you going to lay them out? They, they have to be close to the lake.
Put this off.
Council members four and two against, I think you could probably.
Two years ago. This stuff's twice as deep now as it was two years ago.
Okay.
It doesn't.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to answer a couple of questions really fast before we move on. Um, I had emailed, as you guys are aware, the company that we're looking at and asked a couple of questions because again, if they were already coming out, why can't we just do two of the tubes? Um, so to make a large piece. Okay. So just so you know where this is coming from. That's what I had emailed her. Can we do two, assuming that we could find somewhere to put two of them? Here's a response I got. Don't think I'm ignoring you, but I wanted to talk to Andy about this first. As he told me yesterday, he remembered this pond of having a lot of sticks in it. I'm not sure how much he will be able to clean without clogging the hoses, let alone possibly now wanting to add more than what we did on the first estimate. We did a site visit back in February, but the water wasn't in the best condition at that time. He is planning to try to run down there one day real soon. So hopefully we can have an answer for you by Monday, which would have been today. Um, to answer your other question though, the bags could possibly sit there for sixty to ninety days before they totally dry out. It just depends on what time of year. Of course, a day like today, they dry out really fast. As for the smell, when they did our pond here at the office, you couldn't smell it at all. Um, not every pond will be that way, but mainly the ones that have, uh, have a much higher odor. Um, are the old farm ponds are the ones that haven't been cleaned in a very long time. Even then, you may not smell anything, but you might, yada, yada, yada. So you get where that is. Okay. So then I got an email today because I followed up. Um, and the email from today just states that I talked to Andy this morning and he did not make it down there to look at the pond, but he did study the pictures sent, and he still thinks that we should keep the same estimate that we had given for the seven days of clean, do a trial run to be able to actually be in the, to be in the water, clean and see what the problems they may or may not get into. He thinks there may, there may still be a lot of sticks and debris that need cleaned out and may clog the hoses, causing delays and added time, but we won't know how to quote it accurately and until they would do a clean, until they would clean a few days and see what happens and how it goes and how hard it is to pump. This is the reason for keeping the same seven day estimate. I had seen you, um, the twenty thousand, two hundred, whatever with a thirty by fifty G O two. As for scheduling, we are, we are only work when water temperatures are above fifty degrees, which is usually mid April, usually April to mid October. So our schedule is basically full for the season and therefore this work would have to be done next spring.
Okay, there's your answer.
That was as of today.
Well.
I will say this. I happen to live here where I look at this twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week while all the rest of the experts pontificate. I, there are not that many sticks or trees down in here. They can't go through the canal in my backyard that you've all seen. So I understand that they're concerned because pumps won't pump twigs and trees, especially log jams. But if it's not till next spring anyway, we can't do it on this year's budget, right?
Well, we would still, we would actually, in my opinion, we would roll the current budget that we have over and double it. In the event, let's just be crazy. In the event that this actually did work, we could do it multiple times next year, which when I talked to them back in February, which is why he was here in February. Um, when we had talked to him back in February, he basically said that with this type of project, they would have to do it multiple times because we don't have anywhere for the tubes. So, um, it's unfortunate.
Less and our expenditure is less if it doesn't work. But there's no reason to believe it won't work. They would, they're reluctant because of unknown conditions. That's true of any job.
Now, the benefit of them not being able to do it this year is, um, we could start our three readings. We could do all of that type of stuff. We could get an estimate. We could get first on their schedule for spring of next year. Um, again, we wouldn't have to waive anything. We wouldn't have to do anything. Now, if somebody doesn't, doesn't want to do that, they want to look at other options that we could potentially do this year. The thing that we come across every single time, and I've mentioned this a hundred times, um, after being on the phone for days on end, returning people's phone calls and all of that. The issue is not dredging the lake. The issue is where to take the sediment. If somebody can find somewhere to, for the stuff that's in the bottom, if we could find somewhere to take that, let it dry out or give it to them, whether it be a farm, whether it be something like that, that solves a majority of our problems. Dredging the lake is not the problem. It's the removal of the debris. Or the.
Well, I've, I've looked at the ravine that comes off of, uh, uh, Wildwood. And it's huge. And that could be, uh, I'm going back to the CBs of the Navy. When they do a project like this, they do it in a week, but they would find an area to put the material. Well, we have a ready-made area. If it could be, you know, ready to be ready, where we could put sediment over in this ravine to dry out. It's higher than the lake level. But that's something, that's something everybody would need to look at.
So assuming we're gonna.
We don't have to do it till spring, so.
Do our readings and try to get it for on the schedule next spring, uh, which I'm still in favor of. Does that mean we should put the drain back in the, uh, lakes and let it fill up since we're not, we don't need them. I, I don't think we're doing any dry excavating.
Yes. Get some out here to look at this thing.
Well, I'll mention one thing, and that is last year, the same thing came up and the minute winter hit, we just forgot the subject was there till spring. I don't think we should do that if we're gonna investigate this. They can't come till spring anyway. We should look at all the methods available to us to do the job and find out the cost on it. At least we can figure out which is the most cost effective, whether we do it or not. We at least have the price.
Yes. And I'll tie a string around my finger to remember to bring it up in winter. But, uh, I'll go back to the actual question I had there. Do we want to let the lakes get back up to their level? Um, we have not managed to get anyone to come out and look at it yet. We can describe it. We can take pictures. We can go out and stick a shovel in it if we need to. Um, I know a lot of residents would like the lakes to be back to their level. Um, I do think that'll help some with the North Lake because some of that where it is just a salt marsh now. I know it's not, it was not salt water. Would be back under three or four inches of water at least. Is that something we want to just say, okay, let's fill them back up? And this time really start coming up with a plan of what we're gonna do in the spring. Of course, you can't do anything in the spring because you can't drain the lake because it rains every other day.
But also during the winter, we don't have algae problems. Uh, we don't have other problems. The only problem we could have is if ice or snow bring down some of the trees around the lakes that are threatening to block it.
No, not at all.
And that's a, you know, everybody wants to treat that as a separate subject. We do have some trees just about an inch away from just falling down and blocking the whole lake.
You know, just like the guy that, like has been said, is that we need to still get trees out there. And that was one of the requirements of the muck suckers is to get the big trees out of there. So no, I don't think we'll fill it back up yet because there's still plenty of work that can be done with the water down.
Well, I don't know what, volunteer thing ended. Who's gonna do it?
We can do that again.
I'm looking at it right now. I don't see one person out there doing anything.
We could have another lake cleanup, Joe. We did, we've done two of them a year before, I think, or at least tried.
Well, I, that's what I suggested before. Let's keep this going because it was working, but then we quit.
That's why I don't want to fill with the darn thing back up again.
Well, okay, that's, I, the subject got shifted to lake level. Okay, I understand.
You know, the, the, in the fall, the lake may, it's, of course, it's all random, but the fall, the lake might go down a bit more, just depending on the rain patterns. Um, that, that's some work along the edges. So maybe removing some trees. But, you know, once again, we, we have to, you know, people are not, if we want help from Russell for big ones or some other tree companies or whatever, well, we need to, we need to have some kind of plan that we can flip the switch on because it, you know, if we want to use a vendor, there's several, there's several weeks out, you know, there's the.
But that's true. But I'll mention one thing, Diane, when you were out here taking the pictures, you remember there were four little trees that fell over? They weren't even standing up in the air. They were fairly tall. Russell charged eight thousand dollars to take those out.
They didn't charge, okay, so that's, they didn't charge for those little trees. They, they took out.
Three thousand.
They took out, so.
There, they took out eight thousand dollars.
They, no, uh, no, come on. Just stop that. So.
Okay, we're at nine o'clock and I'm gonna go back to the same question that I asked just a few minutes ago. Um, again, Paul and Pat Miller have a horrific backyard right now. Um, they have weeds all the way through it.
Yard, it's, their yard is made less usable because of the lake right now. So it's, their backyard, their backyard is.
So does anybody have any recommendations for them? Because here's the other part. This is, this is our responsibility.
Keto bites. Are we gonna ever do anything about that? The lake, the north. Put all these skeeters out.
Stop. There's mosquitoes everywhere in the park. You don't have to go.
Stick over the dead face. And I gotta live with this.
We don't have to live with mosquitoes. Definitely.
Okay. So going back to the same thing, it is the village's responsibility, um, in the event that we want to do something. Again, this doesn't have anything to do with muck suckers. This has to do with the fact that there, it, it's full of weeds at this point, obviously, if we're not gonna fill the lake back up, even if we fill the lake back up.
Why don't I, okay, so I'm, I'm willing to do this. I'm willing to call some landscaping companies that might be willing to treat this like a cleanup job. If it's that, if there's, it's mostly just plants now, there's not a lot of, there's not much water there. It could be, it could be plant removal project to at least scrape that out and move it someplace. So I'm willing to, to see what I could do this week if, if you want me to do that.
I would love it. I had absolutely no idea what I'm asking. Everybody knows this is past my expertise. Um, I claim to be smart about a lot of things, but plants is not my thing in the lake. Um, and that being said, I do, I do feel for the fact that this has been neglected for so long. Simple as that. I mean, I don't need to go any further.
Keto spraying and the mosquitoes are coming out of here to the point where they're eating people to the bone over here.
So I'll respond to the mosquito spraying, um, just like I put in the newsletter. Um, we went through Franklin County this year. Um, this is something that's an ongoing topic for a lot of residents. Uh, there are plenty of people that are thrilled. They don't live anywhere near the lake. Um, so I understand and I, again, I'm, I'm somebody that is a pro sprayer because I also hate mosquitoes. Um,
Well, there it is.
Want to look at additional options for next year. Hang on. If you want to look at additional options for next year, this was our only option this year. We went with Franklin County, which, um, I'm gonna be honest. We spent twice as much or three times more money to go through Franklin County to not be sprayed than we did to spray with Blendon Township because of the program. At this point in time, there have not been any West Nile virus or any similar malaria or anything like that found in any of the traps, which is why we have not had to spray. Um, that being said, it doesn't solve all of our problems. They are just traps. Um, it doesn't mean that there's not any anywhere, but the moral of the story is, um, the program that we're currently in is extremely expensive. Um, a lot of people are not happy with the program just because we're not seeing it on Facebook does not, again, you saw it. So we do have a lot of residents now that are the opposite of last year. So we sprayed last year. We got the complaints. We didn't spray this year. We're getting, in my opinion, more complaints. Um, I don't know if there is another option. I don't know if anybody wants to look at it, but at this point, it's a topic for next year.
Well, Franklin County has, has the spraying options as per.
You only need.
You are mute, Joe.
Franklin County has options for spraying. I think the first thing we should do is look for those because I think we should have the traps out. And I know it's more, so I'm more comfortable that they know what they're doing. But, uh, so I think we should look, we should definitely look at what they're, because they, you could buy sprays through Franklin County. I think we should look there first and see how much in addition, if you're already on the program, it's gonna cost. No, it won't be cheap, but I think we should start there.
I actually, I actually think it'll be really cheap and I'm, I'm not even gonna go with the fact that we can't do it. I don't know. You guys can correct me if I'm wrong, but I was under the impression that we, it included one or two sprays already. Now, I believe it was if they found something. So I, again, I have no problem calling, but I don't know if you guys have an appetite to actually spray. So I, I don't want to be the one to, it was your guys' decision as, you know.
Look, a lot of people, a lot of people anecdotally on Facebook today, I, I joined in because I was out gardening yesterday and I'm not near the lake. And, uh, I, I swear they were looking for any part of me that I hadn't put mosquito repellent on. I've never, I mean, it's a bad year. That doesn't mean next year is gonna be a bad year because we had a warm, warm winter and yada, yada. So every year is different. But right now the mosquitoes are bad. I totally agree. And in this instance, I think if you ask me, should we make an exception and spray once? I would say yes, because they are exceptionally bad right now.
And we only need to spray where they are, Diane. We don't have to spray the whole village for heaven's sake.
Oh, wait, we, we have to have.
That's not how that works. Yeah.
That's not how it works. So, um, so anyway, I, you know, so that, that's what I have to say.
Well, lowering the lakes made the mosquitoes worse, but I, you know, mosquito season's over in a month. We have, but if we just pretended it didn't exist all winter, then we're facing this next spring or a new start instead of, you know, maybe knowing what we want to know by then.
Uh, David has something to say real quick. We'll let him talk.
Look at the contract for the spraying because like you had alluded to, I thought there was at least one spraying.
Yeah, I agree.
So I'm just gonna try to catch up on a few things. Um, with regards to the neighbors who are on, who are suffering with the bad, um, overgrowth due to the lowered lake. I, it's absolutely tragic and being an advocate of, you know, lowering the lakes at first, hoping we could get someone out there. It made sense. It didn't seem to happen this year. Let's put the plug back in, give those poor people some relief. Um, second off.
Those weeds are.
Continue.
Let me finish, please.
Well, I'll say about the weeds. If you take them all out, they'll grow back in a week. The scent of the season is a month from now.
Oh, this part of the lake is never covered with water anymore, except after a really heavy rain.
Tony, what I'm trying to say is mosquitoes are weeds. The season's over in a month. We have till spring to work on this and figure it out. So there, I don't see any emergency involved. But the emergency would be we don't ignore it all winter like we did last year or the year before or the year before that.
I don't intend.
I, I don't think, I don't think Consul and, I don't think David was finished.
Um, thank, thank you, guys. Um, I guess the second thing is I've seen a lot of positive feedback on the increase of pollinators and I, with, um, the, um, reduced spraying. I mean, if Franklin County offers something that's more targeted, perhaps we could get on board with that, but the wholesale spraying has been shown to have a massive environmental detriment as well as some of the chemicals being linked to cancer in both humans and pets. So I'm just going on the record now to say that I cannot in good conscience and I will not in good conscience.
Um, but you might want to take West Nile virus and malaria into account while you're counting problems that come from.
So to, to finish my sentence, I cannot and will not in good conscience endorse the introduction of these massive amounts of chemicals that are known, known to cause widespread death of our native pollinators and increased, um, health risks to humans. The, um, the, the P, and with the last thing I'm going to say is with regards to going back to the muck suckers people, we've got the money. Our people, we owe them. We owe our people the, uh, that, that we're doing something to help fix these lakes. That is something that all of us talk about. It's something that all of us want to do. It's something that the village wants. There's clearly an appetite for it. Our finances, our financial news keep getting better by the meeting. Let's hope that continues. Knock on wood. We've got the.
We haven't applied for lake money. There's money out there. We don't have it in our account right now because we haven't asked.
The point being, our people, the people of this community, the people of this village are owed the bare minimum of an effort by us to try to improve their situations. And I, Joe, I know you and I don't often get along on the ideas of the lake uh, outside of the general. This is a wonderful idea.
You live on them?
I don't, but I agree with you.
See them all day, every day?
To be done. Those are, those are the three things. Those are, those are my three things. I just wanted to get those three out there and.
Well, the whole idea of a council is to disagree with each other and debate. So the fact that a lot of people don't agree all the time is the good news, not the bad news that keeps.
Oh, I mean, absolutely. Absolutely. We all agree that the lakes need fixed. And, uh, you living on the lakes is, it, it definitely gives you a unique perspective. If the mosquitoes are very bad, that's tragic.
That, and I have a neighbor on both sides of me that are chasing me around pitchforks all day over this.
And I've got a neighbor doing the same to me about leaves. So, so I think.
Too late to do anything this year. What I'm suggesting is this happened exactly this time last year and we skipped it all winter. Here we are a year later. We'll lose another year if we don't work on this. I'm just saying, let's work on it. Let's debate it. Let's take every angle and hash it out, whatever. We got all winter to do it. And if we wanted to do something this year, it would help, but they won't come.
All right.
It is ten after nine, I said.
All right. It is, uh, ten after nine is, uh, David has said, ten after nine. And I, I think, uh,
I've been a fan of beekeepers since I was growing up and the idea that getting rid of a few mosquitoes where they're infested is gonna kill the bees is just not accurate. There aren't any bees right here where the mosquitoes are. I was gonna put some in, Diane knows, but I don't have a permit.
Diane, if you could do that this week, you would be my rock star. Um, anything that you can find out would be great. Um, and then I could pass it along.
What, uh, you know, it's, uh, it's, I'll, I'll do my best. Uh, I'll call around. I'll try to get people to come out and, uh, look. Um, I don't think, yeah, I'll, I think I have. If you have a, a better way of reaching, uh, Paul, just so that we have permission.
I do. I, I, I will. And, um, if you have anybody you want me to call, I'm, I'm not gonna say that, uh, you're probably better suited for this, but again, I'm, I'm here to assist you on this one.
Okay.
We send some of our, we send our village dudes out with a couple of weed whackers.
You can't, you can't, I don't know that you can step out there. It's all mush.
Okay.
Oh, you, you can't walk in it, but I, this.
Freaking edge of the.
The pollinator subject David has come up before and we've discussed when MI was putting stuff in where there might be sites that would be acceptable to put some hives for pollination purposes and so on. We never went any further than just a mention of that. Uh, Tony would probably know. Is it against the code to have a?
It's, it's, pollinators aren't just bees. Okay. So, but we don't want to have a pollinator discussion tonight. I don't think.
Yeah, that's.
The pollinators are not just bees. There are all kinds of critters out there. They're pollinators.
I raise butterflies too. So, you know, I don't tell people all this stuff.
All right. Well, I was headed to the basketball court. Hey, Brian, is there anybody left over there?
Probably.
Probably not, hold on, let me go.
And it's dark now.
It's super dark now.
They better not still be there.
Set a new business. We, we should look at whether or not we need a permit for pollinators, whether they be butterflies or whether they be, uh, we know they can't be gypsy moths.
Move to adjourn, second.
Hi, everybody have a wonderful night.
Bye-bye.